Okay, all right, welcome everyone, five o'clock. So we'll begin our work sessions, September twenty fourth, twenty twenty five, TCD Board of Supervisors. So we have three supervisors here. TJ is excused and maybe we'll still see Doug. We haven't heard. So let's look at the topic list and if there's any changes or additions that anyone wants to add, let me know. I don't know. Okay. All right. Well, let's get started with Sam. Uh, Sam, you got fifteen minutes including questions.
Excellent. Let me share my, you know, stop sharing yours.
Oh, and let's, let's say, you know, Sam's gonna, he's gonna talk about teacher professional development. Actually, this is cool.
Uh, just, yeah. And then expand those little errors in the bottom right? Yep. Oh, the other one.
Oh, this one.
Yeah.
Sorry, I'm getting there.
No, you're okay. It's always a thing. You have two screens. Wow, the girl.
Uh, all right, so. Hi, everybody. I'm Sam Nadell. I coordinate the South Sound Green Environmental Education Program, as well as some other youth education programs at the district. Um, and usually when I'm talking to board, I'm usually, uh, talking about all of our youth programs and field trips. And this past year, we had something like eight thousand student interactions in South Sound Green programming. Today, I want to focus on our teacher professional development and why we put fifty teachers on a ferry earlier this summer. So throughout the school year, uh, we offer a number of different teacher professional development opportunities. Um, certain years might have different opportunities if we have different grant requirements. But in general, our big events are our Summer Institute for Teachers, which takes place every June. Our water quality monitor and training for teachers, which takes place in September. And then, as needed, one-on-one sessions, uh, to meet with teachers. So for example, earlier today, myself and our new America member Elijah, were meeting with the, uh, fifth grade teachers at Garfield Elementary School, because they want to get started with water quality testing this fall. And so we met with them, talked to them about the program, walked to their, uh, potential testing site down Garfield Creek Nature Trail. Um, and were able to provide that support one-on-one versus, uh, meeting them in a large, uh, group setting. But in general, we really like these big teacher PD events, uh, when we have the opportunity to host them. So in June, we host our Summer Institute for Teachers, or C three-day Teacher Professional Development Event, where we provide, um, clock hours, which teachers are required to receive, as well as stipends for participating. This is typically the week after school ends and kind of acts as teacher summer camp. It is, uh, very in demand. This year, we had fifty spots between our program, Nisqually River Education Project, and the Shale Space Education Consortium. Uh, those spots filled in forty minutes after, uh, sharing out the registration. And we had a waitlist of about twenty people who all very much wanted to participate. Uh, this, uh, program typically takes place at the Billy Frank Jr. Nisqually National Wildlife Refuge. And in hosting it there, we are able to have a lot of speakers. We offer breakout sessions where teachers get to choose which activities they'd like to participate in. This year, our theme was climate resilience, ecology, community in South Puget Sound. So we had these people coming in from the, uh, Governor's Office of, uh, Sand Recovery, the director of that, actually, um, to, uh, members of DNR, talking about seaweed and kelp beds, local kelp beds. Uh, we had people from Beavers Northwest, talking about beavers as, uh, ecosystem engineers. We had, uh, teachers who wanted to share on topics that they were familiar with or things that they had implemented in their classrooms, such as classroom murals out of, uh, local trash to, uh, highlight environmental issues. And so the time at the refuge is really impactful in providing teachers with activities and ideas that they can potentially bring back into their classrooms during the next school year. But one of the most fun things we get to do is take teachers on a bit of a field trip. And, uh, this year, we decided to bring all fifty teachers to Anderson Island. So, uh, we got fifty teachers to the Anderson Island Ferry, brought them to the island and organized this entire day of fun. We explored the intertidal zone at a negative four tide, which is amazing. We, uh, got to do some activities on a Nisqually Land Trust property. Um, and we were joined by some community partners as well. We had Pacific Shellfish Institute, um, and then this is Margaret Homerton, uh, who runs the Nisqually Shellfish Program. And like the other days, this is an opportunity for teachers to learn about activities that they might be able to, or information that they might be able to bring into the classroom. But part of this is also getting teachers excited about being outdoors, uh, experiencing it themselves, um, and bringing that energy back to the classroom. Uh, if the teachers aren't excited or into doing these types of programs, students aren't going to get the opportunity to do them. So Summer Institute for Teachers was very fun, very successful this past year. This past weekend, we hosted our water quality monitoring training for teachers, um, which I actually personally was sick for. But, uh, we still had, uh, or they still had a good time. So this is an opportunity for teachers to learn about our flagship water quality monitoring program. And this is a program that is designed to be teacher-led. There's only, uh, so many days and so many South Sound Green associated people who can help with classes that we try to provide support to new teachers and new classes, uh, as they are onboarded. But in general, teachers are asked to lead these programs themselves. And so this is a training for new teachers to learn about the program or returning teachers to feel more comfortable in leading those programs themselves. This year was hosted at the Nisqually Indian Tribe's Kalama Creek Hattery. And, uh, I think we, we lost a number of teachers to illness or, uh, last minute cancellation. So I think we had seventeen registered between us and Nisqually River Education Project. I think we had nine, ten, uh, still sounded like it was a really nice day. And, uh, including, uh, one Olympia teacher who's going to be testing at a brand new site. I learned that there's a Silver Creek that runs behind Monarch Sculpture Park, and they're going to be testing the water there. And then two, uh, teachers from East Olympia Elementary, who are going to be testing for the first time over there as well. And so as far as challenges associated with PD or just our opportunities in general, uh, the biggest challenge is that we are very much in demand right now. Uh, you know, like I mentioned with the sign-up for Summer Institute for Teachers, when we offer things widely, they get booked very quickly. Um, part of that is that there are fewer environmental education opportunities now due to, uh, cuts at the state level and potentially the federal level. Um, and it is coming at a time when districts seem to be more committed to environmental education than ever before. We have a number of our field programs that have been, uh, basically fit into the district curriculum. So we do a nearshore program with every third grader, eighth grader, uh, at Olympia School District, as well as every high school biology student at North Thurston, uh, public schools. We, uh, are, you know, really incorporated into that curriculum and which is a great thing, but means that we, uh, are doing a lot of those programs because of it. I'll also mention that AmeriCorps or an intern allows us to, uh, have greater reach. It allows us to effectively be in multiple places at once, run concurrent programs. Um, but interns are not always guaranteed. The program that we were participating in through Evergreen, uh, did not, uh, have funding to continue for an intern this fall. And even AmeriCorps this past spring wasn't necessarily guaranteed, but we do, are, we are very fortunate that we have an AmeriCorps member right now. Um, and then in general, program sustainability, we have a lot of programs. Um, and, uh, the idea of teacher professional development is to kind of lift some of the burden off of us as the educators. But in general, as we get new teachers or, you know, we still have that demand from teachers, we are going to be in the field a lot, conducting a lot of those programs. Um, so goal is to avoid burnout and, uh, still be able to offer those products widely. And whenever I talk to the board, I really do just like to emphasize that the mission statement of TCD, the first verb is educate. And we like to talk about all the students we educate. I think it's really significant that South Sound Green is also reaching hundreds of adults in the form of teacher professional development, volunteers, um, uh, community partners. Um, and I'm really proud of that. So, yeah, that's all I got. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sam. Does anybody got any questions for Sam? I just want to say, I think it's awesome what you do because education is the key and getting the young people out and, and hands-on is, it's so important. There's stuff behind their computers and their phones. And so, thank you.
Yeah, it's a great program you got. I was just gonna say it. I'd love to see you again at the Clement Creek Catcher here. That's, uh, we just remodeled that place and it's pretty nice.
Yeah, I mean, it is. So we actually were there last year as well, but it was like still kind of being built. This year, I think they had a, a more, yeah, structured to.
Yeah, and they do have a classroom there too, and they're right encouraging instructions. So.
That's why we were taking advantage of it.
That's awesome. Glad to see it.
And this whole program and all of these interactions, uh, with students and all this curriculum throughout the year and all of the teacher opportunities and field trips, like, comes out of Sam. It's one human being on this planet. And there's like thousands of touch points and there's definitely great support from our AmeriCorps members. And there's still some support from Stephanie, but she's doing other things now. So it's like, it really is Sam. And all of this work that's underneath that.
And I've heard the kids love Sam.
Well, it's a shared sentiment. Yeah.
Well, thank you. Thank you again, Sam.
Thank you.
All right, so let's move on to, well, Sarah, you've got the next three things. The Fall Legislative Tours, TC Bulb and Seed Cell, Harvest Festival, and Strategic Planning. So we'll start with the Fall Legislative Tour.
We'll check the list. Um, yeah, so our Fall Legislative Tours, uh, I want to sort of just share a little bit of like structurally how they're going and what we're doing. Thank you so much, Sarah. Um, and then, and then talk about like our thoughts and plans for next year. Um, last year, we did the same model of trying to do like a Puget Sound geographic focus and a Shale Space and geographic focus. We ended up doing the South County Tour. North County Tour didn't get a lot of participation. It was scheduled for October. That's a busy season for local government budgeting. Um, so we said, well, we'll try and do them in September again, and we'll try the same model and we'll see how it goes. So the inverse sort of issue this year, where we had great participation in the Puget Sound Tour, not a lot of sign-ups on our Shale's tour. We had a few, but not necessarily the heavy hitters of like people that are writing the budgets, but a lot of interest from them. So that was a good takeaway. Um, the tour we did have was phenomenal. We saw lots of amazing sites. Of course, our whole, you know, a lot of our staff is involved in presenting projects or, um, you know, giving presentations at lunch or doing site tours. We've had amazing land stewards present. Um, we've got lots of photos you saw. I won't recap all of that. It was in my ED report. Um, and so kind of what our thoughts are and proposal for next year is that we do one tour in the fall. Little bit of a longer day, be less time, money and coordination on our end. Um, and really try and advocate for people to come to that. And we dovetail between north and south. This is what we've done in the past. Um, but because we at one point had such a heavy attendance, uh, it was just really hard logistically to take so many vehicles of people or a whole tour bus and the expense with that to all these different spaces. Um, it seems like there's still a lot of interest, so that's not necessarily waning. It seems like it's the schedule and availability that's been the challenge. And so what we are hoping to do more of, and it's something that I'm excited about and has happened maybe more sporadically, is more of the customized ride-alongs, uh, just like what they sound. We have Representative Abarno is like, hey, I want to jump in the car with you. We're working with his aide to say what time works for you, you know, because he was like, I don't know if I can make it on Thursday. I might can make it for like an hour and a half. Where are you going to be at this time? And I'm like, tell me when you're available and I'll take you where you want to go and we'll see the things. Um, and especially for folks that are in really important, uh, decision-making capacities before legislative session that are some of our key budget writers. Um, we really want to make sure that we're driving those messages home. Uh, so that's sort of our plan for next year's. We'll have this one bigger comprehensive tour. We get a lot of legislative aides. We get a lot of, of state and local and congressional staff there. We get a lot of our agency partners and policy folks. It's a great opportunity for board members. We can do this one bigger interdisciplinary piece. And then for some of those really target humans that put dollars in our line item, um, you know, we can do some more touch points with them that are bite-sized and fit within their schedules. So the commission is supporting us in that model and helping us. Their policy staff are helping us sort of make those connections and facilitate some of that conversation. They have great relationships naturally as a state agency, um, in that. So otherwise, the tour was phenomenal. We definitely, this is what we do well, is education outreach, these tours. Um, there, it's a model that there's interest in sharing with other districts. Our lobbyist with WACD was like, put this in a can and let's, you know, let's, let's share it around to others because it's not just showcasing the projects and the technical detail, but it's relating back to why that's an impact, why constituents care about it and where that lives within the funding house, right? Where, you know, what, what bucket of funds does that come from and whose responsibility is it? And what are the challenges and opportunities and needs there? So, um, yeah, that, do you want to share anything about the tour?
Well, just that it was, it was, it's always really well-run. Um, you know, and, and the speakers are great. Staff is awesome. Um, and everything they do, I mean, it's amazing what they do. Uh, the shoreline was, was particularly with Karen, uh, yeah. And, and the planting they did there and the taking out the bulkheads. Anyway, kudos. It was very well done. Yeah, thank you. And now TCD Bulb and Seed Cell and Harvest Festival.
Yeah, our Harvest Festival is coming up on the fourth. Many of you are hoping, are hopefully planning to attend and participate in that. Those of us that will be in country. Um, some of us are having fun in other parts of the world. Um, and, uh, yeah, it's going to be our third annual, I think, Harvest Festival. Fourth annual, fourth, yeah, fourth annual Harvest Festival. Um, same location. You've gotten materials and marketing about it. Kiana's probably reached out to you about, uh, coming, participating and volunteering or bringing your communities or neighbors or families for that. There's some new elements this year. You've probably seen a lot of marketing. There'll be like a, a pop-up fix-it shop for folks that have broken jewelry or need to mend something. And they'll be able to learn how to mend different things and help upcycle. We'll still have all of the fun community building pieces, like the Scarecrow Building Contest and the Cinderpress and that kind of a thing. Uh, we'll do our community awards program. We'll be able to honor a lot of our community members that, um, have been working with us and have done really stellar projects. Um, we'll have all of our, you know, uh, little booths and different things where we get to really showcase the diversity of what TC does. All of our staff will be on hand to make these connections and build relationships with community members. And then we'll still have, uh, workshops and demonstrations throughout the day too. So there's always something new and exciting every year, um, as we kind of learn and evolve and grow that event. Uh, but it's a really sweet one. It's really well-attended. Um, and it's really well-attended for an event that's usually on the same weekend as other major events. So Arts Walk is the same weekend and there's another one as well, and I don't remember what it is. But, um, and we still get several hundred people that come to this. So, um, we're hitting a different audience, maybe, of folks that want to connect in this way. And so I think that that's a really great opportunity for us. So unless there's any question, oh, I guess the last thing, and it sort of dovetails into strategic planning is, um, staff took, uh, some great ideas from the last board meeting and we'll have a booth there. And if any of you are participating in it, this is where you'll be.
I am.
Mary Ann, um, where we'll have some strategic plans. Well, I'll probably pop in if you'll.
Okay, I'll hang out with you.
I tend to.
That'd be great.
Spring about, but, um, uh, we will have, you know, the different jars and the marbles and people can provide their feedback in a tactile way to our strategic planning priorities.
Yeah, fun, cool.
Be another way to capture that that's not fill out an electronic survey.
And bring your apples. Bring your apples to get press.
Right.
All right, so thank you. What about the strategic planning?
So this one's a little bit more labor-intensive for all of us here. Um, this is a fun process, this strategic planning piece. It's been really interesting. It's been a great project for me to delve into and sort of see at a layer of depth that I don't get to see a lot of projects, right? I'm usually at a surface level of a lot of different things. Um, so this has been a fun thing to work on. Uh, it's coming together nicely. We facilitated several different sessions with board, with board and staff, with just staff, different departments, all of these different pieces. And so we were wrapping up a bunch of data, a bunch of, bunch of, bunch of data. Uh, there's a couple of, of themes that have emerged and that's what I want to show to you guys tonight and sort of get a little bit of your thoughts and ideas and sort of reactions. In the past, we've had a very, um, limited strategic plan in terms of its focus because it was built for districts, that the structure of the plan was built for districts decades ago, what they looked like then, which was identify the resource concern, operate transparently to address them. And so we saw these truncated sections. At some point, somebody slid in outreach and communication to that plan, but didn't know where to put it. Anyway, it's a limiting structure. And so this year, we've said, let's just not do that. Let's do something different that's inspiring. Um, it's going to bring us into this next chapter and then it's going to help guide us to have new funding conversations and build relationships and all that. Sorry, long lead-up. Um, and so with that, um, right now, what I'm going to pull up on the screen is more of an interdisciplinary look at some of the themes that are emerging for strategic priorities. I'm going to give the same caveat that I normally do, uh, which is don't get married to any of the language in it very specifically yet because all of that is still sort of fluctuating as we're getting information. Why are you not? Um, but start to look at maybe some of the concepts that are being put in these buckets. Well, perhaps. Let's see if this is going to work for us, though. See, I should have been doing this during my long lead-up. So while my computer is entirely frozen, um, oh, no. I'm going to say probably not, but let me see if I can restart my PowerPoint. It's just that the.
You're doing pretty good on time, so.
Actual.
Thank goodness.
Well, this is the work session. Wait till we get to that.
Looking at the time, I was like, oh my gosh, what are we doing?
All right, you're going to go home early.
Nobody's going to talk.
I know.
Oh, I heard back from Doug. Um, he sent somebody a message. Uh, and maybe it was to me and I just didn't get it in the right way, um, that he had a number two issue that came up that he needs to address.
All right.
Uh, so he will not be here.
Thank you.
Yeah, okay. I'm really glad that Sam did his presentation tonight, um, because I think like a lot of these, as we're having conversation around strategic planning, we're going to see similar things to what Sam showed, which is there's so much interest out there, um, and all of that interest needs resources, right, and support to grow, or we need direction to find some boundaries on these pieces. Um, and South Sound Green is one in particular that, I mean, could be, you know, three times as big of a program as it is right now. Um, just by the interest and like Sam has a great strategic vision. Um, and you also heard him say that all of the state environmental education grants were cut this year. And that was a large amount of funding for some of these programs.
Hmm.
Hey, here we go. Thank you for bearing with me. We are in fact saving the Shale Space and Education Consortium, which is the Shale Space conversion, at least the Thurston County portion of that program. It got cut overnight, um, and by the entity that it was housed within. And, uh, they were going to turn back the grant funding that they had secured for that program and everything. And so we're contracting with that program to keep it alive right now. And it may not be that TC is its forever home, but we're going to keep it going because there was just a public outcry around the resources that this brought and particularly to some of the most underserved schools and communities. Okay. Draft strategic priorities, long lead-up. Um, so some of the themes that have been emerging, and this is a distillation of, of some of the board sessions, the staff sessions, survey from the community, lots of conversations. Um, there's a bunch of natural resource issues specifically. And as you saw in our last strategic plan, it's just split out by what those natural resource issues are. And then sort of some of the other interdisciplinary support pieces are woven into those in sort of weird ways. And so what I'm proposing this year is that we sort of think about some of these bigger ideas and we call them out specifically in our plan, and then we start to unpack them from there. So we'll have priorities. I have some draft goals. I'll show you up here in a minute to give you a, a little bit of a flavor of what I'm thinking of. Under those goals will be other layers of like more specific tasks and metrics. We're not going into that today. Do not worry. There's coffee, but you don't need that much. Um, so what I'm proposing is that we keep no more than five big bucket ideas and protect and restore natural resources is obviously one. There's many that are housed under that. Um, we've had a lot of conversations about climate resiliency and disaster preparedness. That's another big bucket. Also, the theme of equity access and community building has come up. And now this will dovetail into other areas around public health and, and access to fresh, healthy food and other spaces. Um, strengthening education engagement and partnerships, self-explanatory and investing in organizational capacity and leadership. And this is one of the ones that I heard really loud and clear from the board about sustainable funding and sort of charting that vision of, um, being able to be less reliant on grant funding that dictates needs and priorities outside of this local community and finding sources, um, that can stay here. And so this looks a lot different than forest and soil health and organizational operations because they're bigger strategic and visionary. And so I'm hoping that that's what this plan is going to be, is more inspirational, and we're going to use language that says that. So I just opened it up for any gut reactions, comments or questions about these. And then I just want to briefly go through examples of what some of the goals underneath these will look like or could look like and sort of get some of the feedback from you about how you're feeling about how this is looking. Um, are there just glaring pieces that are missing? Do you feel good about what might be there? Um, and ultimately, I'd love to use these five big buckets as a, a part of our activity for Harvest Festival. I put these out into the community and say, how do you feel about these? And we will send them out just four words. We'll have a little bit of a description about what that means so that people can, can see those pieces underneath.
I like that they're more descriptive.
Yeah.
Yeah, that it's not just forest resilience or like you said, uh, it, it covers it, uh, more. I, I like, I like it. I really do.
I like it too. Yeah, I think it's cleaner.
Uh huh.
Um, like you said, just having the five components to look at.
Yeah.
I think that's, that's a good idea. I don't see anything right away that I think that's missing. Um, I'm sure as we work through it, maybe there is something, but, uh, for now, I just think, I like it.
Mm-hmm.
Great, thank you. And the hope again is that these are the biggest of the big buckets. These are the big catch-all buckets. And then we're going to start putting little buckets in those buckets and then little baskets in the little bucket. You know what I mean? So, so we'll start to see forestry specifically named. And we'll start to see farmland preservation specifically named, but these are the big overarching pieces.
Cool.
So here's some examples of what, um, protect and restore natural resources could look like. I'm still saying we should have no more than three goals underneath of these priorities, right? These are the big, again, these are the big objective goals that we want underneath these. Underneath that are going to be metrics and tasks and actions and whatever else in more detail that says, what are we going to do? Not all of that will be in the strategic plan. A lot of that will be in the annual plans. I'll give you a second, take a peek, ask questions, share reactions, or give me a thumbs up if you want to see the next one.
I want to see the next one. How are you guys? Thumbs up.
Just a quick question on prioritized protection of forests, farmlands. I know we've kind of, we've talked about this one a lot, like the farmlands itself. And is that in? Is that in maybe two different buckets of protecting like farmland as. As a resource for um, local uh, growing of our foods and. And then also the protection of farmland is as a part of. Protecting our our streams and rivers around the farmlands. If that makes sense at all.
Yeah, if it's for food production and for habitat.
Yeah, is there, is that a two different things? I think both are very important.
Yeah.
And both very different at the same time.
Uh, so short answer, yes. Uh, you don't see, you'll see a little bit about food security later in one of the other goals. But um, this is talking about the landscape at a bare minimum, and then we'll start talking about the justifications and the co-benefits. Further down in the plan.
Sounds good.
Um, I appreciate that. I think that that's really important.
And so legal historical question, where does soil health and protection of soil fit in under these goals?
So this is another thing that we struggle with in general is the interdisciplinary nature of the work that we do, right? Because this is one of the reasons that we've also tried to pull things out in weird ways is because soil health. Does fit under protection of natural resources, but it also does fit under. You know, some of the more human components. So yes, soil health right now would probably fit under this larger protection of natural resources. And that first goal is really about landscapes specifically. There's also the climate resiliency piece too, which you'll see elements of it. And because we can't put soil health in all of the buckets, because we want to, because it fits. We're gonna pull what are the functions of soil health, right? So carbon sequestration will be in climate resiliency, even though it relates to soil health. But soil nutrients for farming is gonna be under this one, you know what I mean? So we're gonna start looking at the functions differently. That's super. There's a whole mind web that you're seeing a peek into that of this like, you know, kind of tangled spaghetti, but. I think it's gonna end up being easier for us to track, document, calculate, and report on if we're talking about impacts. And not these bigger concepts.
That's a good question, though.
That's a great question.
We should monitor that and be aware of it because. That has been a point of attack by people challenging the district's activities by saying we. Admission creep, and the fact is the statute is admission creep, but.
Around soil health specifically.
Soil health was where Conservation District got started.
Oh, right.
There are political reactionaries who wanted to always only be about soil health still. So we can, we should have a soil health and approach for.
Okay, yeah, I definitely think we've come a long way from just the soil and water focus of the Dust Bowl era for Conservation Districts nationwide. Like, there's so many. Benefits and Washington is kind of a leader in um, being really innovative and.
Doesn't support that criticism of districts, but it's.
No, we have a very broad statute. Alright, I'm gonna move to the next one. Uh, climate resilience, disaster preparedness. Right now, you have both of those titles in there because they mean different things to different people, but we're talking about the same thing, really. So here's where you'll see things like climate smart farming to ensure future food and water security. You'll s- know that that has. There'll be soil health undertones in there. There'll be carbon components to that. There's also water quality and quantity in that from our old strategic plan. Remember, there's only five, so you're halfway. This one is really about community engagement, and we had like an outreach and communications bucket in our past ones. Uh, but this builds in some of our uh, low income and underserved work, some of our. Uh, cultural work. Uh, one of the things gaps in our last plan was a lot of the work that we do around. Um, like cultural relevancy and tribal relations, so that builds this into this plan. Um.
And we're already doing this. I mean, really, you know, a lot of it, yeah.
And this is also where you're seeing a lot of access. So land access and farmland preservation from that angle is a huge component of this. Um, and of course, we're looking at preserving farmland from preserving the landscape and one of those others. But now we're looking at it also from preserving it for availability to grow food for people. So.
So increase uh, access to land. Is that like? For land to purchase or just to be able to access to land to to use?
So yes, right, is the answer. Um, so this would be our succession planning efforts to transfer farms. This would be our farm late program to match. This would be farm by yard, right, to just access to grow food on the half acre in Susan's front yard, you know? This would be any of the work that we've done with like the food bank and school gardens and teaching people how to preserve their harvest. And the work we're doing with the Food Garden Bu Coda. So it's this big, broad concept that has a bunch of the different programs and pieces. But it's all focused on that impact. So yes, it would be. It would be farmland preservation and easements, right, so that that land can change hands physically, but also access to go and farm this land.
Okay, I'm just curious with access to land like um, like harvesting uh, wild. Wild foliage, I guess. Like I said before, me and my wife will go out and get certain things and make medicines or whatever out of it.
Yeah.
There's not a whole lot of places to go, so.
No.
Uh, protecting that, I guess, resource and just making it available, I think this would be a good goal. Part of even our forest health, I guess, is where that would fit maybe.
How do you feel about like? What do you think the success of something like that might be for something like farmland if folks had forests or forest land? That they were interested in other people coming to sustainably harvest. Or forage for things, you know, and there could be a connector, because that's what Farmland Link is, is it's a matchmaking service, right, to those humans, you know? Could that be an angle?
Yeah, I think that that would be great, yeah. You and just, they help uh, landowners identify what they have in their.
I like, I mean, I'm thinking about mine, and I have some really interesting things in my forest land, and I'm like, why do they?
Yeah, yeah, that's an excellent idea.
That'd be awesome.
I personally had some property and you thought you had Devil's Club on it, so I brought us.
Oh.
You know, I thought they looked at it and it was something totally different, but. But he, he didn't know, right, so.
Well, I think that that's like a great blend of like access to food and medicine. Um, but also like you're building in cultural relevancy and engagement and doing some of that. Community building and educational transfer.
Yeah, I love it. I do too.
Just made your way into a grant application, dude.
It's so inspirational that.
Please direct us to do this. Uh, unless there were any other questions on that one, this is slide number four, um, strengthen education engagement and partnerships. One of the biggest, you know, touch points are a lot more people know about the district than ever before. There's a lot of people that still don't. And so we wanna look at our marketing and raising awareness of what we do. But you know, this is sort of like a peek in the next layers of this plan, but we also wanna transform that. We wanna say this is what the district is doing for you and not necessarily this is what the district can do for you. To transform that ever-growing waitlist into like. Even if you don't want to engage today or don't have a reason to, know that we're providing you this benefit and do more of our storytelling pieces. To not necessarily come on, we're trying to sell you something, come by our service or participate in our service or take an action, but hey, you're part of this big collective. Impact project.
Mm-hmm.
So when I look at this one, um. My question that is like, okay, so to what end? So we want to strengthen education engagement and partnerships, but. For for what is, what is the purpose? Like, that's not, not just to have, the purpose is not just to have strong partnerships. But like, what are we accomplishing for that? Like, what's kind of the thing that's above that? Cause this almost feels like a how.
Yeah.
Right? It feels like there is a.
How do you do a thing by?
Right, it feels like there's a bigger thing that sits above this. And is it around like? Maintaining like broad community support for what we're doing so that we get more funding, right? Is it like, is it? Something around that, right? Cause what are we doing through that, that strengthening those engagements and those partnerships?
Perfect. Thank you. Your eyes can glaze sometimes when you're looking at the different layers of this plan that, and that's perfect. I love that feedback, and we will do that. We will put. This as a how, somewhere in this portion of the framework. And think what is that bigger, broader, what is that empowering stewards engaging community for what purpose? I have all the buzzwords now coming to my mind. Thank you. That's really helpful.
That could be done with reference back to other sections of the strategic plan. So for every partnership you're strengthening, you can say, I did. Checking this partnership references back to.
Yeah.
Climate resilience, so I'm not, you know, we've got a high potential.
Well, and so we're taking some of those how pieces that relate to literally everything that we're doing, and we're putting them in their own bucket over here. Not in this linear, because then we get spaghetti. So they're gonna be like, it should be like key initiatives, and there's gonna be like. Key strategies to do this work that is more linear, um, and they're gonna live in bubbles in their own space.
But but the two. Double-sided sword of breaking up the how is one. By breaking up the how, you actually look at the how, so you're actually. Doing the thing, um, rather than just thinking about ideas.
Yeah.
But the other, the the danger breaking up the how is it can become. Uh, it can transform organizations into self-perpetuating. Organizations where what they do is what is needed to better themselves and form their partnerships. So that's why the link back is always critical for a how.
Yeah, and we can make that connection, that those those functions and like the methodologies to accomplish these other pieces. Are linked back, and that's one of the strategies that we're using. But I think that's great, because you're right, that's not necessarily an end goal for something. Yeah. Last one. And this one's a couple of the themes that I heard. Again, um, and it's gonna be a lot more of our district operations bucket, right? It's about creating sustainable funding sources for the district. It's about making sure that we are the right size and scale of organization. Um, this is also where you're gonna see things like building out some of the infrastructure requirements that we have. Um, or 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 seeking in the future also around where we wanna be. Community leaders in conservation and developing policy and, you know, sort of spearheading some of these regional efforts. Um, and sort of being seen as that. That was a theme that came up multiple times, particularly for the board. Um, so you'll see that reflected in here, and that's that's that goal fifteen is to start to unpack what that looks like. And so again, that'll be linked back to other things, right? We'll be a leader in the fire resiliency, community engagement, or we'll be a leader in. Farmland preservation.
This is also a how. So actually organizing the plan into three whats and two hows. Already shows a link.
I'll look at these last ones.
I'm sorry to kind of self-organize that, whereas this, the sixes, the last two, I follow them, first three.
They could be another tier, the build pyramid.
Those will fit those, so. Nice job.
Any other thoughts around especially those five big bucket pieces now that you start to see them unpacked? I hear the how and the mechanisms and the methods here. My proposal might be to s- keep all five for the Harvest Festival feedback.
I like that, yeah, keep it simple for them, yes.
Um, because if we just give them three, it's less exciting, right? So five is good.
Yeah.
Um, but we'll definitely take this feedback back, and even if these are priorities and they end up being in a different structural part of the plan, they're not being lost. They're still there. Okay. That was super helpful feedback for me. That's all I have on strategic planning.
And then we have the WACD Southwest Area Meeting.
So the Southwest Area Meeting uh, is in Wakayakum in Rosberg. If you know where that is, it is go to Longview and take a right.
Oh, wow.
Stop before you hit Astoria.
Oh, goodness.
Yes. Um, so it's about two hours, two hours fifteen minutes away from here. Um, Wakayakum County. Wakayakum Conservation District is hosting this year. Um.
You wanna spell that?
W A H K I A K U M. I know. It was not luck, it was training. Because they're another district, so I.
Impressive, okay.
Um, it is on October sixteenth. Um, I am interested to know who might be interested in coming to that, and I can pull up the uh, meeting information. For you. Quick, I'm gonna share screen one more time. No worries, I just. Morning. Um, although they don't actually, they've not sent out their full agenda yet, so. It's usually, I mean, that meeting says that it's from like nine to three. They open at eight for. People to filter in and get their materials and sit down. It's from nine to three-ish. Um, they serve lunch. Normally what you see in there, here's the agenda I'll put up for you, is. There'll be some partnership updates in the beginning, um. You know, from the commission, from NRCS, from WACD, uh, from NACD, from Wade, that will be on here. That's an update that's not on here yet. Um, so you'll get to hear a lot of that at the beginning. Sometimes it's helpful. You get to sort of see the direction of where they're going in a leadership space. Sometimes there's also not a, not a, you know, there's some Q and A, there's not necessarily always known things, especially at federal level, but it is a touch point with some of our state leaders. Um, so you'll have that interactive panel next, and then in the resolutions process, one of the topics to talk about tonight is resolutions. Um, and that piece, so we'll, we'll move into that next, but, um. And it's a great opportunity to to network with other conservation district supervisors. You get to see some small presentations. Or maybe discussions or issues or topics brought up from other districts. You can see that that's a whole section on here, ten minutes for all seven of us. Um, some of us bring presentations on our accomplishments. Some of us bring key ideas or concepts or something innovative. Um, some people just hit their whole annual plan. Here's all the metrics, let me read them to you, kind of a thing. Um. And then again, this is the first stop for resolutions after they pass through the virtual district to see if they're gonna make it to the floor at the state level and be adopted. So is there anybody who's interested in participating in this? TJ is right now playing, yes, he's fine, this is not finished. Um, TJ is planning on participating at this moment. Um, and so I'm gonna register a hand. Doug will be participating, also probably presenting for NACD. I would be there on behalf of our district to present, presenting on Wade.
This is the same one that they had at the um, distillery.
Yes, we hosted last year.
Right, that was nice, by the way. We did a nice job. Um, I'm not sure. I'm a maybe right now, so, but I'll let you know as soon as I can. Um, when do you need to know?
So you can all, I mean, they always save some space for you to register at the door. They would really like you to register by the first of October. Because of catering mostly, right? If there's a cost, they will bill us whether you show up or not, um, if you're registered.
Which is next week, isn't it?
Alright. Okay, and if you. It's Wednesday. It does say Tuesday on here, but you're right, it is Wednesday. Uh, but again, if you decided last minute you want to come. You can come.
Alright.
So I I think if you're on the fence, um, I would err on the side of showing up if you want to, um. But if, yeah, if you know that you wanna come, then we'll register you now.
Yeah, I'll wait. I'm gonna have to wait. About you, you?
Yeah, I uh.
Think about this.
I'm gonna have to look a little closer at my schedule.
Okay. The, um. Most sort of impactful piece, other than the networking and information sharing of this, is the resolutions process. It's particularly useful if we have a resolution that we are trying to champion. And that we want a lot of votes on, or if there's a particularly contentious resolution coming to the floor at the area meeting. That we have a really strong opinion about. at the area meeting that we have a really strong opinion about. I'm not sure either of this will happen this year, so just to be fair, as you're deciding what your schedules look like. There's not a strong target, so it is informational, it is a way to engage in this. The annual meeting at the end of the year is the culmination of this and so, you know.
That's the one that's after Thanksgiving, right?
Okay. It's a bigger.
In Spokane.
Okay, and then Spokane again last year and then it'll be in Vancouver the next two years, so it'll be much.
Much closer.
Okay, um great, so I'm not hearing anybody wants to be registered at this point, but I'll register Doug and.
Yeah, yes, please. Okay, let's see, where are we? Well, sucker, we're gonna move on to.
I think resolutions are also part of this, like a sub piece.
Oh, is it? Cause I think they put it down on governance, but it's not on the agenda on governance. So I know last time he did put it under there, but that's okay. If you want to do that now, we can do that now.
Interesting. Um yeah, that would be great, actually, if we could tag that on to just the Southwest area meeting piece. Um I, it doesn't concern that, it's not on governance.
Yeah, that's okay.
What I recommend doing is going through the resolutions really quickly here and if there's anything that require discussion or you want to make a decision on it, then take it under government.
Yeah, that's what I thought, okay.
And spoiler alert, a lot of the resolutions haven't been sent out yet. So a lot of boards are meeting this week and next week and they're passing their resolutions, so I have not seen a whole lot other than the ones that I sort of shared with you at the last meeting.
Okay.
Where I don't think anybody was really super interested in taking official positions on them. They were not anything super consequential. It was like March seventeenth, it should be Conservation Day, you know, that kind of stuff, so, uh which is really neat, but also maybe not something that our board wants to vote on. Uh we did have a conversation about uh Doug generating a resolution around a resolution to stop all resolutions. Uh but basically a moratorium on resolutions.
Yes.
Right, and putting that forward. Um I uh had a lot of conversation with Doug to sort of help co-draft that. Um and we sort of formulated an approach for the board meeting tonight. Um through this process and this conversation, we also learned that W A C D's Ways and Means Committee is formulating and will be functioning. Um they have a new Ways and Means Committee that came out of a resolution last year to address the same problem in a different way. But basically to create a committee of folks to sort of say, these are all the resolutions we got. Here's how they relate against time, capacity, like effectiveness. Sometimes resolutions get passed that W A C D literally has no authority to affect. Um and that they will be synthesized and sort of triaged and shared back to the W A C D board. So the board can then direct the staff according to this list. And it'll be a great hybrid committee of of lots of different supervisors and and probably staff of different entities that can look at these and say, what's practical, what's burning now? Um and so after I talked with Doug, he said, uh I don't really see the need necessarily for this resolution. But I did tell the board about it, if the board is interested in putting that forward. Um then I volunteered, I can do that. We have a draft already. Um and and I have it ready to share with you tonight um at the board meeting. But it seems like perhaps it's not as critical as before.
Well, it doesn't sound critical, but did you want to move this down to governance and talk and put it there?
My recommendation would be no, I don't think that there's a need for the resolution. I don't think it will be well received.
Like it, no.
By the other district.
Already working on this, yeah.
Or W A C D and I don't think that it would pass.
Okay.
I think it was more of a communication tool to send a message that, hey, if we adopt eighty resolutions every single year and we have three people working on them, we're never gonna be able to succeed. Um and it seems like they're trying to address that issue in a way that doesn't sort of limit people's voices or emerging issues or things like that, so. So Doug was comfortable with not putting it forward, but we have it in our back pocket in case y'all were interested.
Are y'all interested? No, I don't think so. Yep, sounds good. All right, well, let's move on to important updates and announcements. David, you got anything? I have one thing. Um I went to a Future Wise event, it was actually a fundraiser, but um but their lawyer, Tim, I can't say his last name, was talking about um the fact that they have appealed, uh they've taken Thurston County to court over the zero protection of farmlands. That they needed to have that in there. Yeah, it's been ongoing that I wasn't aware of, but now it's in the appeal process. So it's an appellate, is that correct? Anyway. I thought you all would want to know that. It is, it's in appeals. Um this is the second time they've done this with them.
What's the name of the group?
Future Wise.
Used to be Thelton, Thelton, off of it, but.
Yeah. Future Wise created the the Growth Management Act. There's kind of the.
And so where, and they are appealing because they want Thurston County.
Thurston County should have had protections, not, they they had zero protections of farmlands. They should have had protections for farmlands. So the only one in, I think in in the state that didn't have any in there. We've lost more farmlands than any other county, so. So that was, yeah, they did talk about that. Anyway, it was very interesting. Um so we have five minutes, Sarah?
Uh we're gonna be on Washington Grove. I mean, literally we, but also like we, I'll let you talk about your piece of that, but uh and we'll be talking about voluntary stewardship and conservation and farmland preservation, right, period restoration.
Cool.
We hit as many of the big bucket buzzwords as we could in the.
Is this the same one that TJ?
Two minutes.
Was on? No.
Yes, yeah.
Is it the same one?
Yeah.
Okay, okay, cool.
And it'll air, hopefully, while we're still in legislative session, but um.
Well, will you ping us when it's airing?
Yes, they're gonna let us know when they actually have a date that it will air.
Okay.
And then, yeah, we're gonna definitely.
I mean, we need, we need an airing party.
Yeah, party.
I like airing party, yeah.
Be fun.
We will, it would be really fun. I mean, it's not long, you know, they're very, but still, you know.
It would be.
It would be. Anyway, something to consider.
But I would be really interested if Ben could find me more about the.
Tim, do you know the guy's last name? I can, I haven't.
I have it somewhere too. I I'll look, it's, I I'm a a an appeal in the land use process doesn't necessarily mean it's going already to the Court of Appeals.
He said it's in the appellate.
If it's in the appellate court, then it is already to the Court of Appeals. And I can, I can look that up, it's Washington, they. So, um yeah, I'll, I'll look for filings by Future Wise and see if I can dig up. But what Future Wise does is they know the Growth Management Act better than anybody, because they're the one who wrote it.
Yeah.
They police local jurisdictions that miss components. And farmland preservation, yes.
A big part of it.
Is a component. It's supposed to be a goal that leader can't burn any process, and it is just an old machine, uh uh under the act, not doing that.
And it's very, very, very um unsupportive of the swap law. They they do not like it, but anyway, there's that. Yeah. So we have two minutes. Do we have to go two minutes? Two minutes. All right, all right. Well, let's uh let's end the work session and return at six thirty for the board meeting. All right, welcome. At six thirty, we're the Board of Supervisors. There's David Eil, Jennifer Colvin, myself, Mary Ann Tompkins, I'm with the Thurston Conservation District. Uh so TJ Johnson and um and um Doug Rushden are both excused. So we have our legal counsel, Mr. Cushman and staff members and our meeting is recorded. So our gender review, let's take a look at the agenda. Does anyone have any changes to the agenda? Take a look.
Just an acknowledgement that none of our partners are going to be here tonight.
Thank you, Sarah, for letting us know. We have no partners here tonight, so, all right, well, if there's no changes. Do we have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
I'll second.
All right, Jennifer, seconds, all in favor? Pose, all right, so the consent or the, sorry. The consent agenda is approved. All right, so that's that one. I know, I should have done that. We approve the agenda. Now let's go to the consent agenda, all right. So to looking at the consent consent agenda, do we have a motion to approve that?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
A second, okay, David, all in favor? Oppose, all right, consent agenda is approved. Okay, now, do we have any public people for public comment on Zoom? Is there any public? Nope, nobody's there? All right. No partner reports, no Josh, no Doug, no Deshelle. All right, so our October twenty second, twenty twenty five work session topic list and meeting agenda. Do we want to um review that for next month and take a look at it?
And it's up on the big screen.
And what do we got here? Uh staff presentation, Prairie Project Joey Burgess. Community partner presentation, we don't have anything at this time, right?
No, it might be need to plant salvage, they might wait until November, so information there.
Cause they were gonna be here today.
Last month, yeah.
And then um uh T C D Growers Conference, I know TJ had that moved to that, um strategic planning. More on that, long term funding committee, TJ, I'll talk about that.
Will there be a long term funding committee meeting before that?
Potentially, I'm not sure if this is um.
He's back on October thirteenth, though.
Yeah, I I don't know if there'll be a lot to report, that's just in here as a standing item, so we'll see if there is. We adopted those financial principles that are gonna be put into our strategic plan and I think that that's a big piece for now. It, we'll see where the dashboard piece ends up. Um Susan's gonna be on vacation for a while and we're gonna be starting our budget process. So I would prefer, actually, if we switch that to budget development. And we can have some conversation about our twenty twenty six budget. Once that starts to take play, shape and the strategic planning piece starts to take shape, those will feed into that dashboard that we've been talking about.
Nice.
Okay, let's keep going down and see if there's anything that's probably everything else is just standard, isn't it? Let's just keep scrolling here.
We will have a C E C meeting.
We will, okay.
Yeah, I think we can keep scrolling.
Yeah, it's really soon. Recap of the area meeting, talk, the annual conference in Spokane.
And this is on the meeting agenda, just in case you want to take any action uh to approve positions around any of the resolutions that are moving forward, if there are ones that the board strongly for or against.
All right, yeah, looks, all right, good.
Looks good.
Um well, oh my goodness, oh my goodness, I think uh do we, we can adjourn now to am I right? Am I right?
I think you're right.
So who, do we have a motion to adjourn?
I'll second.
Second by Jennifer, all in favor? Opposed? Nobody's opposed and we are at six thirty four. I want to just say, for the record, I beat you, TJ.